To be here. Would somebody touch the? All right. Well, it is 9:00. Welcome to Commissioner's Court. Given our circumstances that we are under, we're going to continue to be able to get our message out and to also experience open government through these times. So before we get started, before we call the meeting to order, if you would, please come forward and give us a prayer. And Commissioner McCann, the pledge is.
Pray with me. Holy God, we just come today and we confess that you're sovereign God over all as you are and all that you've created. Father, if we were arrogant and prideful, you humble us. God, if we were distracted, you have our attention. So, Father, in these days, we pray for your grace and favor. We pray for your staying hand on the spread of a disease that is painful and causes suffering and death. Father, we pray that the purposes that can be accomplished for good would be accomplished in every situation and every circumstance. Father, we continue to pray for your watch care over our court, our judge, our first responders, and all the people of our county and our state and even our nation. So, Father, at that end of day, we just humble ourselves before you, acknowledge our neediness, that our confidence is not in man, but our confidence is in you. And, God, we are encouraged and blessed by the thought that every need we have, you are more than able to supply, that our deficiencies are filled up, God, in your great abundance. So, Father, today, we humble ourselves and we call out to you and ask you, Father God, to heal our land in every way that through these circumstances, God, you might work to bring about for your people your perfect will and accomplish your good. God, at that end of day, we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Dr. Romans, thank you, sir. Okay, it is 9:03. We will call this meeting to order. First item up, are there any citizens' comments that were presented? No citizens' comments? Thank you. Item number one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioner's Court on March 17, 2020. Any additions, deletions, corrections?
Hearing none, Judge. I move that we approve the minutes of the previously held Commissioner's Court meeting on March 17, 2020, as presented.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tootley, second by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor? Item passes. Item two, consider and take action to extend the Henderson County Declaration of Local Disaster Due to Public Health Emergency until April 7, 2020. Gentlemen, we do have here our declaration. What's before us, there have been some changes to the declaration. We have our county attorney, Mr. Clint Davis, with us. If you would, please come forward and discuss with us.
Other than a little bit of cleanup, good morning, guys. Other than a little bit of cleanup to the order, the main two provisions that were changed is we specifically made reference to the Governor's Executive Order and said that we incorporated the Governor's Executive Order into our emergency declaration, which would include any amendments, additions, or rescissions of the Governor's Executive Order also. And then the second big one is we made sure that we put the penalty in there. That's something we didn't necessarily have to put in there to have the penalty, but I just felt it was important for the public to see. We get a lot of inquiries from the public that say, "Well, what if I just keep doing businesses? This is just some sort of little fine that I can pay and keep going," or things like that. And we wanted the public to know that, no, this isn't just some $50 or $60 fine that you pay and continue to do business. It's punishable by $1,000 a fine and up to 180 days in jail, and every day would be treated as a new violation. So you could stack up some hefty penalties fast by defying the orders of the Governor.
Questions?
Could we have done this a longer period of time or shorter period of time? How does that work?
We could have done it for 30 days. In discussions that I had with Judge McKinnney, we seemed to think that the court would probably be inclined to review it every two weeks anyway, every other Commissioner's Court meeting. I think, too, there's an aspect thereof. We don't want to go too far out in the eyes of the public and have the public believing that we're overreaching with our emergency declaration, because let's face it, nobody really knows how things are going to be in a week or two weeks. And we're all going to be meeting anyway for Commissioner's Court. We'll address it in two weeks and make the determination as to what to do with it then.
Thank you. So, Clint, we've seen throughout that Dallas County, Coffin County, and all the local cities are going into lockdowns or shelter in place. Can, do we have a definition of what that really means? People that are, say, in Dallas County and they shelter in place, are they allowed to go outside their county lines?
It depends upon the language in the orders that are used. A lot of them are very similar, and you guys know that a lot of them are probably orders that have been passed around from city to city. But then there are some differences in some of the language. And so you really, I've had some people contact me on that, too. You really have to look at the order specific to that city or specific to that county to know what their orders say. Most of them that I have looked at is they will list all of the exceptions. You know, there's exceptions for if you're leaving your home to get necessities. And necessities would be food, clothing, even as included as a necessity. If you're losing, leaving for medical care, that's an exception. Some other exceptions, though, were work, if you work for an essential business. And then they typically have their essential businesses defined. We've been laughing in my office because, you know, both Dallas County and Louisiana, I don't know about a lot of the others, you know, they included the liquor stores as an essential business. And it's just that. If we were to look at doing an order, we could go through and list all of the businesses that we believe were essential, and we could include them in there as exceptions or not include them. And then there's a lot of exceptions, too. There's a construction, it's actually in jobs that are essential to infrastructure, which if you've read some of those and looked at that clause or looked at that paragraph, it is very, very broad in most of the orders. It includes any type of road or highway construction, any type of residential or commercial construction, airports, electricians, plumbers, gas. There's a long list of all the different construction is an exception, which would mean, when I say that, is those are all exceptions to the in-shelter-or-at-home order, which means if you work in the construction field, that's considered an essential job. You are still allowed to leave to go to your employment and back. It doesn't mean you have the right, just that you're immune to the order and you can run around and do what you want. But back to your, I know you asked me the time and I tell you how to build a watch, but you really have to look at the language in the order.
So, in this declaration right here, if we had to go to shelter in place before next Tuesday, would this give the judge the authorization to go ahead and do that, or do we have to do that as a Commissioner's Court?
The judge could do that on his own.
I'd like to make a motion to extend.
If I could just hold you just a minute. This is an opportunity here. There's a lot of people there that are relying upon us to make good, sound judgments here, not only for individually, but for our county as a whole. The impact of what we are currently going through is not only personal, it's economic. And economic becomes personal very quick to a lot of people. And given our demographics, given what we have seen as far as the statistics, when you look at the U.S., Texas, Henderson County, putting those together, what you see is the fact that when we do not have the population density, and yes, we do have two lakes on either end of the county that are a destination point for individuals coming out of those areas, because we know Smith County and Dallas County both have exact cases. But it is my feeling that what we have here presented before us is our best option, since we do have the authority and in consultation with our county attorney to, if things change drastically.
Tonight.
Tonight, we have the authority. A county judge in every county in the state has the authority for seven days. Everything that is done by that county judge in the realm of emergency declarations has to be ratified. And that's same way for cities with city councils, as my understanding, I'll speak for judges more so than I will for them. But we have flexibility to react to what's needed change. This puts us in line with the state of Texas, and it will augment with the state of Texas as if the Governor changes or issues another. Our declaration will augment with that so that we do not have to take immediate action.
Which would include a statewide stay-in-place.
Right. Right.
And so let me ask you another question of the questions that people have asked me. Our next step, and the final step, would just be a shelter in place. Is there another step after shelter in place?
I do not really know of one that is viable, and there's lots of arguments about the viability of a shelter in place order. There's many arguments.
Right. I don't think at this time that our county is dense, and you've given us those numbers of 81,000 people in Henderson County compared to 2.6 million in Dallas County, as we talked the other day. So people have said on Facebook that we've been dragging our feet. The next step is shelter in place, and people are not going to like that, when you start tying their hands. So I think that we've done what we need to do at this time, and you have done to protect our citizens.
Yeah. Right. Well, we have tried to take a steady, even keel, sober approach.
I just wanted to address, too, is you have to understand, too, is a lot of this, and this is just my opinion, needs to be graduated steps, and there's a reason for that. We are experiencing some issues with enforcing the current government's Governor's Order. We do have the businesses that are trying to defy the Governor's Order and just saying, "I'm going to do it." There's real danger in that. And the real danger in that is that we have other businesses who are paying attention and watching, because again, as the judge said, this is personal to them, it's their economic livelihood, and they're calling us, saying, "If you guys are going to allow them to open for business and you're not going to enforce that against them, what keeps me and my business from just opening my doors?" And then when you do that, you have no rule of law, you have no order. The Governor's Order is reduced to anything. And so, you know, we need some time. We are working on those and working with those businesses to try and make sure that orders comply, but if you jumped immediately into the stay-at-home order, I don't know how these other counties are able to enforce that, because again, it's been what I would call a little bit difficult at times with the current orders that are in place, much less a stay-in-place or stay-at-home order.
The real factor in the effectiveness of any order in any situation is the individual's ability to govern themselves and to make the proper decisions and to not succumb to fear and reactions. The 24-hour news cycle is doing nothing but continually stir people up. And it's, it is pertinent information, but the continual drumbeat again and again and again. I watch the news, I take care of it, but also get some time away from it, because what you are continually exposed to is what you will begin to become. So I believe our order is a very good order that provides all the capabilities that we currently need under our circumstances. Okay.
It's just uncharted waters that everybody has said.
We are.
And we're making a best-guessed assumption to protect people, is all, I mean, is the way I see it, and what you've done and what he's done is.
And I hope everyone understands, and you make a great point, since, I would say, since the Spanish flu, we've not experienced something of this magnitude when it comes to a health emergency. The state, all the way down to us, is working in a fashion together, staying in constant communications, trying to get the information out, where to get your information, where to get resources, in keeping us to where what is available. But as you could tell from the Governor's press conference, they're building out their approach as it develops. He said himself, 254 counties, and on last night's call, I believe, 46 counties were, had been reporting cases. Well, that leaves over 200 other counties that has not. It is my personal belief that the virus is everywhere. I believe it's been in and among the communities around for several months as an unidentified flu test. So keeping that in mind, we are going to continue to take measures for the health and public, the public safety and health of the citizens of this county. And I know all of us together have spent many hours reading like everyone else in trying to manage our organizations. The essential services of the world must continue. Anybody like to say anything else? I feel like I'm talking the whole time. And no smart remarks from. All right. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to extend the Henderson County Declaration of Local Disaster Due to Public Health Emergency until April 7, 2020.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Cheney, second by Commissioner McCam, to extend the Henderson County Declaration of Local Disaster Due to Public Health Emergency until April 7, 2020. Any further comments? All those in favor? Item passes. Item three, consider and take action on rules and guidelines governing the management of the COVID-19 outbreak. Ms. Lee? Gentlemen, in your backup, as we get HR in here, we have a, it's guidance on how we're addressing the county's operations during this time, just so that we have it all condensed into one location for COVID-19 instead of scattered throughout all the different annexes and operational guides. This is a quick reference point for everyone. Good morning, Ms. Beavers.
Okay, so I have just simple guidelines for our department heads to kind of follow as to how we are treating the coronavirus outbreak.
Sorry, we're turning their conditioner down so everyone can hear. Go ahead.
Okay, so the first little bullet point here just talks about if an employee has traveled outside the U.S., what steps you would need to take to ensure that you are bringing them back safely to the workplace. The second tips are, the second point is just tips on how to minimize business disruptions. And the third talks about the ADA and how we are still compliant with the ADA in asking these certain questions. And the last part, page, or section four, letters B and C, I did have one change, and I'm not sure if Angie was able to send that out to you guys. It did read, "If an employee self-identifies." I have changed that to, "If an employee reported as," for both of those letters. And this kind of just goes over how we will handle, department heads will handle and pay their employees during this outbreak. And I just ask that if you guys approve this agenda item today, that the entire court sign the document.
This is acting as a memo from the court to the department so that we have something with specific directives for this event?
Yes, sir.
Questions for Ms. Beavers?
Our dump areas are still operating at normal hours, or trying to. So we're trying to get through these times also, the road and bridge guys. So these tips and guidelines have been very helpful for me, and I want to appreciate your work.
In favor? Item passes. Item four, consider and take action on Henderson County investment. Questions for Ms. Lee?
I have none.
Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the Henderson County investment policy.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cheney, second by Commissioner Tootley, to approve the Henderson County investment policy. All those in favor? Item passes. Item five, receive financial reports, which we have none. Item six, consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheet, which we have none. Item seven is consider and take action on submitted contracts. We have none at this time. Item eight, consider and take action on requests for right-of-way permits, which we do have one in Precinct One.
Yes, Court, I got presented one this week. It's actually Crescent Heights Water. They're really good about informing me about any work they're going to do on one of my county roads or right-of-way. It's actually a leak in the ditch. It's on County Road 1500, located in Precinct One. I've actually talked to them, looked at the location, and they're going to fix it after it's approved through court and to keep that, it's a small leak, and they feel like they can fix it and get my right-of-way back to the way it was. So if there's any questions, it's in the packet, the drawing, the hand drawing, and the location.
Questions for the Commissioner? If not, entertain a motion.
If there's not any questions, Judge, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed right-of-way line activity report, the utility report for County Road 1500, located in Precinct One, for me to sign.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Tootley, to approve the utility, excuse me, the right-of-way permit for utility work on County Road 1500 at the request of Crescent Heights, with the Commissioner's authorization to sign. All those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you. Item number nine, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. We have none. Item number 10, consider and take action on payment of bills. Ms. Lee?
Yeah, we do have those. For 2019, the bill's total $1,844.48.
Questions?
No questions, Judge.
Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve for 2019, $1,844.48.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cheney, second by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the fiscal year 2019 bills in the amount of $1,844.48. All those in favor? Item passes.
The 2020 bill's total $216,119.43, and I know there have been some questions in there regarding the payment to the Humane Society. That is one-fourth of the $326,000 budget.
Questions?
No questions, Judge.
None.
Commissioner?
No, sir.
Entertain a motion.
So, I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tootley, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the fiscal year 2020 bills in the amount of $216,119.43. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 11 is consider and take action on submitted plats, and I believe we do have one in Precinct Two. All fees are paid.
So, Court, this one is, I'm going to give you the total lowdown. I talked with Clint about this and everything. So if you'll look at your plat, line three at the top, that runs north and south, and the original lot line. So if we start with the original lot line, that is the boundary line between Hidden Hills Harbor Edition and Lynn Creek Cove Edition. And the owner of this lot, '61, '62, and '63, also owns Lot 34. So he owns four lots in two different subdivisions. Hidden Hills Harbor has the, has a POA and has approved this plat. The Lynn Creek Cove does not have that plat. So the original lot line, he wants to be able to move over to line three to also give his son that is going to build a house on Lot 34 R access to the water. Clint says there's nothing that he can find that would keep us from moving this original boundary line. I've talked to the judge. The reason why he wants to do this is because when he bought this property, somebody previously built a carport eight foot over the property line. And so he just wants to be able to sell his prop, sell the property in case he wants to sell it, is the reason why he wants these changes. So we're going, I told him we'd go simple to complex. I don't know what the law is about moving an existing boundary of a platted subdivision. And I don't know if Clint has that answer or the judge has that answer. Who does?
The individual that has proposed this plat, he owns all affected lots, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That is correct. Mr. County Attorney, would you? At this point in time, I don't see an issue with it.
He has, and I apologize, he has letters that he was supposed to bring me, but he has, I don't think the minutes were approved yet, but they have gone to the POA and they have written a letter saying that they are okay with this. But I apologize at this time, he didn't bring those to me, but I have seen them.
And I've looked at it and I've done research. I can't find anything that would prohibit you by law from making this change to the boundary line. The only really thing that, and I think that's pretty clear and I'm comfortable with that, the only thing that's a little bit unique is that one of these subdivisions does not have an HOA or POA. You know, normally, if we're changing the boundary line of a platted subdivision, or really even if we're changing a lot within a subdivision, we have the HO or POA would actually sign off on that or prove it. The only thing that changes that here is that we don't have one of the HOAs or POs. But again, I don't think that prevents you from taking action as a matter of law, no different than if they were changing a boundary line within that subdivision. You still wouldn't have an HOA or POA, and that's why, from a legal standpoint, I don't see any problem with the court doing that. see any problem with the court doing that.
Questions?
Hasn't been any opposition from the Lynn Creek Cove? None on either side?
Not that I've been made aware of.
Commissioner, you need, Commissioner Thomas?
No question. No, sir.
Ball's in your court, sir. What does that mean?
Judge, I move that we approve the replat of Lynn Creek Cove and Hidden Hills Harbor, Lot 34 of Lynn Creek Cove, Block 1, lots 61, 62, and 63 of Hidden Hills Harbor, Section D, to now be 61R in Hidden Hills Harbor and 34R in Lynn Creek Cove.
For filing purposes only. Second. Motion made by Commissioner Tootley, second by Commissioner Thomas, for the final replat in Lynn Creek Cove and Hidden Hills Harbor, creating lots 61R in Hidden Hills Harbor and creating Lot 34R in Lynn Creek Cove for filing purposes only. All those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you, Court, very much.
Thank you. Item 12 is open and consider bids. While we are signing.
Judge, do we have this declaration posted somewhere for the general public?
It will be after, once it is signed.
Okay.
We will get everything issued and sent to the governor's office and made available for the public.
Good deal, thank you.
Does the county have the investment policy in time?
Yes, I do. Thank you for reminding me. Here is the updated memo. Thank you for reminding me, I was sitting on it. Commissioner, if you would, I would sign and then hand back. Well, item 13, thank you, sir. Item 13 is consider and take action to adjourn, and I will welcome any discussion ahead of that adjournment as a part of the adjournment process, if there's any discussion that would like to be had. What I would offer is, is for everyone to continue following CDC guidelines and looking out for each other, be that good neighbor, be of good courage, and do not succumb to fear, because at the end of this, we want to have good stories to tell.
Yep.
So anyone else wish to say anything?
I've got three items. Wash your hands, wash your hands, stay at home. Isn't that what CDC says?
That's what they're saying. Anyone else? Hearing no further comments, need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tootley, second by Commissioner McCam.